I have to let him know.
Okay.
He's turning it on.
And we'll be live in a...
Now it's recorded.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to March 28th Planning Board meeting. My name is John Heikel. I'll be sitting as Vice Chair. I'm sitting as Chair this evening. Like to go around the room first and start with introductions.
Brian Rose, the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Phil Devance, the Selectman.
Chris Nato.
Mark Warden.
Gail LeBrecq, Recording Secretary.
John Heikel.
Barbara Griffin.
Richard Meany.
Simone Duhamel, Alternate.
Great, thank you. Would like to welcome Chris Nato to the Board. He was newly elected this last election. Barbara Griffin was also re-elected. Congratulations and welcome back. Brian Hanson is absent this evening, and in his absence, Simone Duhamel will be filling in as a voting member.
Yes.
Thank you. Next thing we need to do is elect officers, Chairman and Vice Chairman. If we have some nominations for those positions, or anybody would like to do it, please speak
I'll go ahead and I'd like to nominate John Heikel for Chairman.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Okay, Mark Warden.
If you'll accept it.
I would accept that, sure. Are there any others? Okay, well. Then by a show of hands, I guess, let's have a vote for John Heikel for Chair. And that's unanimous, thank you. How about Vice Chair? We need a Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Barbara.
I'll second that.
Great. Barbara nominated by Phil, and seconded by Simone.
You don't have to.
I don't. I think you better nominate somebody else.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would prefer it.
Thank you.
I'll nominate Mark Warden.
No. I spoke too short.
I spoke first, too slow.
Yeah, I'll nominate Richard Meany for Vice Chair.
And I'd second that. If he'll...
You second mine?
I'll second it, yes.
You second my motion.
I second Mark's motion.
Yours wasn't seconded.
Yours wasn't, yeah.
We weren't being recorded.
And if you would accept it, we would have a vote if there are no other...
Unless you want to wait till Brian comes back, we can nominate him.
Actually, what do you need to wait for?
In a sense, do it.
Yeah, we could just vote for him tonight.
I like...
That's what he gets for not coming.
Sure, I'll do it. It can't be hard, right, John?
What's that nominee, Brian?
It's very time consuming and tedious work, yes.
That's awesome.
But you'll be up for the job, I'm sure.
Thanks.
Okay, so can we have a vote? Show of hands for Richard Meany for Vice Chair? And it's unanimous.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
Why should we vote for you, then?
You voted for me. It's your problem.
I know, but if you won't vote for yourself, why should we vote for you?
I've already been elected.
Too late, right.
You can overthrow me next week.
Okay, well, that settles that. So we have our officers for the next year. Minutes from last two weeks ago, March 14th meeting. I assume everybody's read them. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Richard Meany, motion to accept. Phil Devance, a second. State by saying aye to accept.
Aye.
Aye. Noes?
You have to abstain.
Abstain?
I abstain.
Chris and Barbara abstains. Okay, so the minutes are all set.
Just one other set of minutes. Remember that.
Yes, and that's going to be non-public, I assume?
I think we can do it in the public. We're supposed to do it in the public meeting to accept.
To accept it in public. Okay, and we... Okay, so we'll take a vote on the sealed non-public minutes?
Motion to accept the sealed non-public minutes of February 28th, 2013.
Second.
Richard's seconded by Simone, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
I abstain.
Mark and Chris abstain?
Barbara.
Barbara abstains, okay.
So do we have to turn these in, or take them to our graves, or how's that going? I read it to make sure it was correct and...
You should turn them in, I assume. Give them to Brian if you don't want to take them to you, great.
Should I make you sign for that before you give it to them?
Okay, well, let's... I don't see any old business on the agenda. We have one new business on the agenda. It's for MAP 20, Lot 16, Site Plan Subdivision Plan, Time Extension Request for an Approved Plan, to convert the use of the property to the mixed-use development Dearborn Village condos, for one new office building and four condominium buildings totaling 16 townhouse dwellings. Janus, Barnerville, Mast Road, Danus Park Road, zoned, R S B O This is just a... This is just an extension. We've done this a few times. We've supported the applicant in the past. We would like to discuss this issue before we... Brian, do you have anything that you'd like to say to this, from the town standpoint?
Only that, again, it's a time extension for the mixed-use project to do condos in the back and an office building up front, to tear down the existing office building. And then, the only reason it's being requested for a time extension is due to the economy. It's had to go through a few of these, and I think they might be working on getting a buyer for it. I don't know. Maybe Jan can speak to that, but I heard a little rumor about that. So, other than that, I would recommend we give it another extension in order to allow them to meet all of the conditions of approval that are in effect from the original approval, and from the revised approval that removed the 55 and up restriction for who could live there.
Okay.
I'll turn it back to the Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll simply add that the real estate market is still a long way from where it was five years ago, value-wise, and hope it picks back up so she can do what she wants with the property, but it makes sense to grant the extension.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing before I turn it back to you, I'm sorry. This application did come in a few days later than the time needed for the 30 days prior to its expiration, so they need a waiver of Section 3A, 3D of the Development Regulations. And so, in my staff recommendation, I've put that that would be number two, after you find that it doesn't have regional impact, to waive that section with the findings for waivers that are listed there. And then, there's a public hearing that goes along with this, and we would ask if the applicant wants to have a... give a presentation. And my recommendation for the extension would be to extend it to March 28th, 2014. That'd be a year from today, to meet the approval conditions of the plan.
Okay, so everything is... Chris?
I have a question.
Certainly can, Chris.
Tell me if I'm out of line, being new here. I'm just curious, what was the reasoning for not having the 55 and over requirement anymore?
Probably limiting... You know what? We're going to ask the applicant to come up, and she can explain all of her reasons why.
We accept the motion first?
I would accept that motion, yes.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion that we find that the Site Plan Subdivision Plan Time Extension Request does not have a regional impact, that we waive Section 3 dot A dot 3 dot D of the Development Regulations, with findings 2A, 2B, and the staff recommendations, and that we accept this Site Plan Subdivision Plan Time Extension as complete and ready for review.
Second.
Okay. Motion, Richard's seconded by Mark. Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstain? I think that's unanimous, even though I didn't hear everyone.
Right here. Brian, his staff, he comes up with all these.
Okay, let's... Why don't we have the applicant come up and speak with us and...
Hi, Jan.
Hi, Jan.
How are you? I'm Jan Bornville, property owner. Welcome aboard, Chris.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Useful.
To answer your question about the 55, when I had that removed in 2011, when I first designed this, 55 and over was very popular at the time, but the market severely changed, so that was why I removed that restriction, because it just wasn't in demand anymore.
Is there... Okay.
Yeah, I figured. I just figured. I wanted to ask, but I figured that was a reason.
Pretty cut and dry.
It was great years ago, but not so much now.
Starting to become young, 55.
I'm almost there.
Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, I just would appreciate the opportunity for another extension, and I do see the light. I'm sure Simone and Mark can... might agree with me on this, but it's getting better. I just don't see the tunnel yet, but it's coming, so that's a good thing.
Great. And for the folks watching, this is on the corner of Mast and... Mast and Danus Park.
Park.
Right, so anyone looking for condos or developing or...
Beautiful.
Whatever, yes. Anyone looking to do something with this, or chip or buy into it, contact Jan. Great. Well, if that's it, Jan, then we'll take a vote on it, and we'll be all...
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, open a public hearing?
Thank you.
We're going to open a public hearing now, and if there's any public that would like to speak regarding it. Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, let's take a vote on...
Question?
Yes.
In regards to number six, we usually have the board discussion after the public hearing. Just a question for Brian. I noticed that there were no department comments. Was this just not submitted to the departments because there really wasn't any change, or...
No, I had... We had submitted the time extension plans and just did not receive any.
You just... So it was submitted, you just didn't receive any comment back?
Okay.
That's pretty typical on a time extension.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to... It wasn't clear to me whether they had been sent out. Thanks.
Great, everything's all done. Mark?
All right, I'll move then. Number seven, approval, one-year time extension to March 28th, 2014, to meet the approval conditions of the Site Plan Subdivision Plan.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Did that include the previously imposed conditions of approval as listed below?
It did not, but I would be happy to modify it as such.
I'll modify my second as such.
We get that, Gail?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so modify. Show of hands, all in favor, raise their hands, of extending to March 28th. All opposed? Abstained? That's unanimous. You're all set till the next year. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
We talked a while ago about time extensions and the time allowed to start, and I believe in our Development Regulations, Brian, we have... You're allowed one year to start, and the RSAs evidently allow for a longer period of time, and our Development Regulations are a little more strict than the RSAs. I was wondering, when is the appropriate time for us to address aligning our Development Regulations with the RSAs? I think ours say one year, and not the extensions, but the initiation, and the RSA say two years, or something to that effect. When's the appropriate time for us to address that?
Didn't we just address that on the warrant discussion?
No.
We did. We did a warrant article for the structures destroyed by fire.
Oh, okay, that's right. That was a same-time period issue.
Ended from one year to two years.
I see you brought it up. I figure we got a new board. Might as well throw the question out there.
Well, I think this year, we could definitely, you know, take a look at our Development Regulations and make a change. We haven't made a change since 2009 on the Development Regulations, and they are in need of an update, so if we want to, you know, set up some type of planning board, subcommittee, or something, they can work on, you know, what type of changes should be made. I think that would be a good idea.
And then, just in follow-up to that, if we're going to form a subcommittee to work on that, right now, when we sort of do approvals of plan with the conditions subsequent, like we just did tonight, with plan revisions that need to occur, the official date of approval of the plan for purposes of that clock becomes the day the plan is signed by the Planning Board. And right now, there's been a change in the rule a few years ago, where just the Chairman signs. I mean, that we used to all have to sign. So you can actually have a plan approved and not signed for up to a year without requesting an extension, and then there would, even with the one year, be another year to begin construction. So that whole... If you're going to consider that, we probably need to consider the regulation from... and address timeframes from the time of the last Planning Board action, not necessarily approval of the plan, because, for example, in this particular case, just using this as an example, this plan has already been out there but not approved for five years, but not signed for five years.
Hasn't been signed.
So at some point, the applicant might... Let's just say in the next year, comes in to sign it. It could be one day short of six years since the plan was originally approved, and then another year for it to start. And one of the reasons I ask my question is, sometimes regulations do change that affect the Planning Board approval. I wasn't aware of anything that might happen on this site. I'm a little concerned because of the timeframe, that we just didn't get comments back on that, because DPW getting back has been an issue lately. But I don't think in this site, it would have applied anyways.
Well, just for the time extension portion of it, I mean, this project, if it were to get going right away, DPW would have a comment regarding, you know, tearing into the road to do any kind of...
Right, but that's sort of... But I'm just pointing it out, if we're talking about timeframes, there needs to be... We need to sort of look at the all timeframe, not just that particular one, because I think there was a reason in regards to why that range of a start date was enacted, because different Planning Boards have different requirements for clock.
I think, you know, there's many more things than just the timeframes as well that we should be looking at and updating in our Development Regulations, so...
Okay.
If we are going to set up some type of subcommittee, then, you know, I would expect that we should do a thorough review of the whole document and try to update it as best as possible.
How are Development Regulation changes approved? Do they go through voting, or is it just through the Planning Board?
It's through the Planning Board only. It's not a town vote, so the Planning Board will do a public hearing and vote to adopt it, and that's it.
Want to volunteer?
If I speak up, I volunteer. That's the way it works, right?
Yeah, be a good idea. I think these do need to be redone and looked over, and... So would you like to be on a subcommittee and to study this?
If you form one, I'll be on it.
I'll form one.
Okay.
Okay, and you can... You and Mark can...
Any volunteers?
Any other volunteers who'd like to help?
I'll help with you guys.
I'll help, too. So we'll all be, you know, I think this is an important project that we need to look into as we move forward. So, good, we can all...
I'm not sure how subcommittees work. Do they... Can they only be...
Less than a quorum?
Less than a quorum. I think that's probably the way.
Can they only be less than a quorum?
And really publicly noticed, like all meetings, I would assume.
I think you probably need to look into that before you form it.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like we have some volunteers willing to work on it, and we can... I'll find out the details of how to form the subcommittee, and if there are rules on how many people can be... And we'll come back next week, or two weeks from now, and we can...
Yeah, makes sense. I don't know. It's not a meeting, they're not voting on anything, so...
I probably won't be here two weeks from now, but I assume that I'll be volunteering as the Chair.
That means you'll be nominated for everything.
As the Chair of the subcommittee. I understand that that's what's going to happen in my absence, so I will be the Chair of the subcommittee, yes. Thank you. I second the nomination. Got it. But I'm still not voting for myself.
Go through the action items?
Sure, let's go through the action items. Brian, would you please...
So, action item number two. We've already taken care of number one. Action item number two is, we need a CIP committee representative from the Planning Board. Tim was our go-to man for the CIP committee for several years, and he's no longer on the Planning Board, and we need somebody to replace him. So, anybody up for it?
That's a...
Do you want to know more about that?
Why don't you explain, John, what that is?
Yeah. Well, the CIP that I know of is the Capital Improvement Project.
Program.
Program. And it's money that is spent to update our vehicles and update special purchases that may not be in... That may not be in a line item on a budget. It's in a special capital improvement budget. Okay. So the Planning Board, a member of the Planning Board, sits on that CIP, and Tim, I think, chaired that.
He did.
So Tim really had that one under...
If I can go into a little bit more detail, what it is, it's a... The CIP is a planning tool that we use to spread out the costs of purchasing and doing projects, big projects. So what the Capital Improvements Program Committee does is, they will review applications from all the staff members. They will put all of their... All of these applications for projects and dollars into this big matrix, which that's kind of the thing they look at the entire three or four months. They work on it during the summertime. And then they prioritize based on, okay, what's the most important? And then also, they look at, okay, how do we spread it out so that it's not going to be a huge hit to the taxpayers one year, but then, you know, nothing the next year? So they try to make it an even deal, where the tax rate's not going to have these up and downs, but it's, you know, we're trying to spend it as needed, but also in an orderly fashion. That explained it very well, but...
And then their recommendations are used by the Budget Committee, or the Selectman, or both?
Yeah. What happens is, the CIP committee will come back and make a recommendation to the Planning Board. The Planning Board will take it and make a recommendation to the Selectman and Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee and Selectman will basically utilize those, or cut things from it as they need to, in order to make the proposed budget for the town for the next year. So, that's...
And do you remember how many times they meet during the summer? Like, once a week for three or four months, or twice a month?
No, it's every... It's every other Thursday, the off Thursdays of Planning Board. So if you were to jump on the CIP committee, you would be meeting essentially every Thursday during the summer.
And how many are on the committee?
There are eight, eight or nine, something like that, on the committee.
Well, do we have any volunteers?
Alternates do those things?
Well, we have an applicant. We have an alternate. We have an application here for an alternate.
Because it's obvious Simone doesn't want to do it.
Great way to learn.
I don't see why not. I don't... I think alternates could be easily put into a position to...
I think so, too, and if... Maybe we should... We'd find out from the applicant if he'd be interested in that. I know...
He's going to love me. So if you want to discuss that first, we can.
I think we... I should, in case he is sitting, maybe he wants to, and we just... And he's not able to say so right now.
Okay, so Tim McKernan, he is actually here tonight, and has put forth an application to be an alternate on the Planning Board. This is number five on your action items. And you have the application in front of you, as well as his resume, and he was one of the ones who ran for Planning Board and just didn't make it on the board, and is still interested in serving, and so he's looking at trying to be an alternate. So if the board wants to maybe have him present himself and talk a little bit about himself, that'd be him.
Well, before we do that, why don't we... Well, before we do that, why don't we review the rules on how you appoint alternates to the planning board, and if there are any? And I'm not saying I'm opposed to this at all, but the committee probably ought to understand what the rules are, how many we can have, how many do we have, and that kind of thing. John, maybe you can explain?
I think we have one right now, and I, and I think we can have two.
We can have up to five.
There you go.
Five, five.
So, two, two's in there.
And the, the way that alternates are appointed for the planning board is the board will appoint their own. Many committees in town are, the alternates are appointed by the selectmen, but for the planning board and the zoning board, the elected committees, these two elected committees at least, elect their own alternates, based on applications submitted, and if they want, if, you know, whatever they see on the application, if they think that that person would be a good addition to the board.
And is an alternate someone that fills in if one of us can't make it?
Yes.
Basically what it is.
Yes.
Any alternate can participate in discussions such as when, when Simone is sitting here, but we have a full board. She'll participate in discussion, but then, when it comes time to vote, if the whole board is here, then she will just, you know, not vote. If she's been asked to, or if any other alternate has been asked to sit in for a missing board member, then they would vote, just as a normal board member would vote.
Right. Well, uh...
Is that a good enough explanation?
I, I just suspected there were members that didn't know what the process was, or what alternates were. That's why I asked for it, so thank you.
It's a good meeting to learn as much as we can tonight.
And to follow up on that, they can come anytime, right? Any time of the year, and just asked to be appointed, and we say yes or no?
Yes.
Great.
And if you're a member of a committee, I assume, and you can't make it, could they fill into that committee as well? Like a CIP, or a EDC, or...
Well, we've had alternates serving on Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, so, you know, I think that...
They're an alternate to this board, not the subcommittee, John, so that if they weren't, if somebody can't go, someone can go, but technically, they should be appointed by the board for that pro tem, that particular matter. But they could do it. It's just not an automatic standard.
Right, okay. Great. Well, we have the applicant here with us this evening. If you'd like to welcome, and if you'd like to tell us a little bit about yourself, then we'd be glad to hear it.
Sure. Tim McKernan, I, some of you are familiar with me as my worthy opponents, either for planning board or for state rep. I have been involved in local politics here in Goffstown for the last few years. My family's from Goffstown. I do want to stress that although my involvement has been partisan in the past, I understand this is not a partisan board, and I don't seek to bring partisan politics into this. I just am interested in serving. I'm interested in public service. I'm currently a law student at UNH School of Law. I commute up to Concord every day, and I'm, right now, I'm actually studying administrative process and legislative process, so I'm really interested in, you know, getting in the, in on the ground and helping out.
Cool.
Entertain any questions?
You still want to be on the board after sitting here?
Still awake, so...
What about baby?
I didn't expect to be asked to devote every Thursday night, but I certainly would be interested. If it is just through the summer, then that would be fine. During the school year, it's a little tougher for me, but through the summer, I'll be doing a full-time internship that really shouldn't interfere with my ability to, to be down here every Thursday night.
I think it's great. I, I've seen your name around and try, you know, wanting to be involved, and it's a great way to be involved. So, I, I would support it 100%. I think he's a good candidate. And if, are there any other comments, any questions for the applicant?
Let's vote.
Let's vote. All in favor of having Tim?
Do you have a motion?
Oh, we need a motion, I'm sorry.
Yes, too.
Do we have a motion?
Sure. Motion to add Tim McKernan as an alternate to the planning board.
Great, we have a second.
A second.
A second, good.
Anybody interested in defining a term?
Three years, starting today. I guess it would be...
No, he has to be sworn in first.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be a...
Can we, can we just give him the biggest term possible?
I think it's, it's three years according to our...
I think there must be a three-year term.
Right, according to this, it's three years.
Three years.
Well, but...
No, that's...
As long as one is available on the books.
They're rotating slots, so they're not all open for three years at any one time.
If, if there is a three-year term available, put him into that.
Well, when you review these for discussion next, next meeting, you put that in there, will you?
I would be, I would be surprised if a three-year one were not available.
Okay, so the suggestion was to make it for the longest term available.
Maximum sentence possible.
Yes, three to five.
No parole.
Right. So, three years, and you, you're, you're acceptable to that, and you would be willing to take that term for three years?
I'm, I will be graduating in 2014. I hope to stay local, but, you know, because I have to go where, where work takes me.
I understand.
But I won't be graduating until June of 2014, so I can commit a hundred percent...
Year round.
Yeah, I can commit 100% through there year round, and then after that, I'll just, I'll have to see, but I would like to stay local.
Oh, good. I'd like to have you. Okay, well, with that, we have a motion and a second, so let's take a vote. All in favor of having Tim as our alternate? Raise your hand. All, any noes? Abstentions? Welcome, Tim. Welcome to the planning board.
Should I move around?
No, you're not sworn in.
We, he can, he can, he can come and sit if he wants. We won't, we won't be able to...
And not sworn in.
You can't not entirely...
You can stay, you can sit there. You can, well, can he sit there still?
Sure.
Sure.
There you go. There you go, right.
So, what will happen is Brian will let the town clerk know that we voted for this to happen, and then they have to do a...
Do some paperwork.
They have to do some paperwork, and then you have to come in and, and take the oath of office and sign it, and just make sure Brian has your phone number, so Kathy Ball can call you when the paper, or Brian can call you when the paperwork is done. And as soon as that's done, then you can come to the, to the next meeting. And if you don't have a chance to get in here to get it done during town hall hours, you can ask that it be given to Phil, because Phil can swing you in as selectman.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure I can come in during, during town hall hours.
Good. All right, great.
What's the normal procedure also for, how does he know that someone might be out? Does the town call him? Do, do, do I call him, or...
He asked me that. I, the normal procedure has been, you know, the alternates are invited to every meeting, whether people are here or not. I think it's appropriate for them to be here as many times as they can possibly be here to, you know, get a feel for how the board works, and what the things to be looking for are, and whether, you know, you're acting or not as an alternate on that day, it's just good to be here. So, you know, I don't, I usually haven't made the practice of trying to only invite them when someone's missing, because you never know who's gonna be missing anyway, so.
Yeah, what I've done in the past, informally, if I knew I wasn't gonna be here, I'd let the chairman know, usually Brian, and then the alternate.
Okay. Yeah, Phil?
Well, one of the things about advantage of having two alternates, and hopefully that they all attend the meetings as much as they can, because as you know, sometimes an applicant comes in and it gets postponed to the next meeting. So, let's say one alternate was here at the time, it got postponed to the next meeting, that alternate is not here, but the other alternate was, comes. Now, it's great if that alternate was at least at the prior meeting that knows what was going on, rather than just picking up a packet of minutes and reading the minutes and try to get in. It just works a little better that way.
Yeah.
And the way that it normally works for alternates, and I don't know if, I think the rules or procedure probably say something about it, but I think you try to alternate who is the, the acting alternate for different applications as you go through the meeting.
Before the, before the discussion on the agenda item begins, the voting alternate needs to be identified.
Designated by the chair.
So, tonight, since we have one alternate, announcing it at the beginning of the meeting was sufficient, but if there's more than one alternate, it needs to be identified at the commencement of the discussion of any item.
Of the voting alternates.
Right.
All right, so before each item on the agenda, if there's multiple alternates that would be serving, you know, you'd wanna maybe go back and forth between them, so you might designate Simone for the first item, and then Tim for the second item, and then go back to Simone, and, you know, so on and so forth.
And if there's two board members, then they'll both be sitting and...
If they're both, two, two board members go on, then yeah, you can just do as you did earlier today, and say, you know, both alternates will be serving as voting members.
It's also possible, an applicant, application comes in, that a member of the board would have to step down for some particular reason of a personal involvement with the applicant. And then you have an, an alternate that could fill in.
Right, or a conflict of interest, or I guess you could call it. Very good. So, we have three more spots open. For anybody watching, they can, certainly they welcome to put their name on, and we'd be glad to have you as an alternate. So, we're all sat there, we have our new alternate, Tim McKernan. What else is happening here?
Number three on the action items was appoint a representative to the Economic Development Council.
I am interested in finding out more, what that's involved.
Basically, there's a, there's one meeting a, a month on that. It's the first Wednesday of the month, I think. I'd have to double check. I, I can never remember the dates of meetings that I don't go to. So, I'd have to double check when the meeting is, but there's a once-a-month meeting, and it's in the evening, about 6:30 in the evening. And the Economic Development Council, basically, their, their mission is to further economic development in the town. And it's a group of different people. I think John's been on the Economic Development Council before, and, I don't know, Richard, were you on there for, no, you were on Conservation?
Brian, Brian was on the economic development.
Oh, that's right.
And I was, I was on Conservation.
That's right, okay. So, you know, you might glean a little bit from John, or you might...
So, is it, you go when you're the representative for the planning board on...
Do you remember what night they meet?
It's the, it's on the town website. You can check it out, Chris, but it's our first Wednesday of each month, 6:30 here.
Okay.
And they'll usually be like a, they'll usually be the first place where somebody might come with an idea, and this is how we treated it. But we'd also hear things that are happening maybe before the planning board would, would hear it.
So, you know, let's say I was on that, and someone came and they wanted to do something in town, then they come to the planning board, do I have to recuse myself from voting? Because I know that they're...
No.
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 No, I would only recuse on a...
If, if you stand to gain financially from it...
Yes.
Okay.
Then you would want to recuse yourself, or if your family members were involved with it, or something like that.
Okay, yeah, deep personal...
I mean, if you're alone gonna financially, but if you live in a neighborhood, then you just happen to live there.
Right.
I don't think you need to recuse yourself on those.
I'd be interested in that position.
Okay, great, well, you certainly, uh...
So, did we, did we make any motions for the last one? I can't remember.
We need a motion for, we need a motion to nominate Tim. No, we need a motion to nominate someone to the, um...
CIP?
CIP.
Can I be nominated before I'm sworn in?
We have to wait till you're sworn in, yes, before we can...
Could we make a nomination subject to swearing in? So, I could say, I'd move that subject to, sort of like our condition subsequent, right?
Why don't we just postpone it until the next meeting?
That's fine with me. I won't be here, but...
That's okay.
And it's clearly okay for an alternate with that be every...
He will make sure you don't get nominated to it.
I, I make a motion that I am not nominated to any of these things in my absence, and of course, none of you guys will second it, so whatever.
So, we'd be okay with Tim being the CIP as an alternate? We have to...
I guess let's take care of that next meeting.
Okay.
And then, so we, I guess we just need the motion for the economic...
Good way to jump in and find out where the money's spent. It's always a good place to start off, and...
I've seen them come up on the warrant, so it's, it's actually interesting to see.
Yep, it sure is. It's a great place to learn where money's spent. You'll find a lot of other things out that way.
You looking for a motion on this next one?
Motion for the economic development.
If he came forward and volunteered to do it, I nominate Chris Nato to be the planning board representative to the Economic Development Council.
I would second that.
We don't take other nominations?
Any other nominations? All right. How about a vote? Vote on the motion to, for Chris Nato to be on the Economic Development Commission. All in favor, raise your hands. All opposed, raise your hands. Abstained? Unanimous.
How long is that position for, if I should ask that?
Five years.
And it's every Wednesday?
Right.
That is, for as long as you can be on it.
Deal with it?
Right.
Am I gonna regret this?
Not at all.
If you get voted back on the planning board, another three years, you'll be good for another three years.
Without further motion, it's done.
That's right, it just continues, right. All right, Brian, what's, what's next?
Okay, number four on your agenda tonight is review rules and procedures. I don't, I don't want to review them tonight, but I wanted to at least put them back on your tables. I want this to be a regular occurrence every year when we have a new board, and, you know, basically a new membership. We review the rules and procedures again, make any adjustments or changes as we see fit, and re-adopt them as our current rules and procedures. That way, I don't get into the Alan Eaton rules and procedures as...
Right, as Alan...
...he wanted to in the meeting.
So, now it's John's rules.
That's right.
Yeah.
New sheriff in town. And those, do we, do we use Roberts, I mean, do we use, we don't use any of that? We just govern ourself, and we just, we're just kind of self... Good, okay.
So, that's before you. There was one thing that I didn't put on your agenda, but needs attention by the board. The zoning board of adjustment is, has received an application for time extension on the Bog Road project for Jim Cofflin. And part of our zoning ordinance requires that, and it's got, if a project comes to the ZBA that has more than three dwelling units, then the zoning board's supposed to forward that to the planning board for review and comment. If the planning board so desires to review and comment, then they would forward their comments on to the zoning board for, before they take action on the, on the special exception. It's just, it's a time extension only, but because it's an application before the zoning board, and it's regarding that, I felt it still would be prudent to bring it to the planning board if they want to make any comment. So, there you have it. Just for those people who don't know what the Bog Road Cofflin project is, it's a 76 dwelling unit town home project off Bog Road, and it went through multiple years of planning board review, and... And has not been built as of yet, because they have yet to get enough financing to do the project. But they have kept all of their approvals valid. They are, they have state approvals, they have lots of approvals, they just need funding. So, it's, yeah.
Didn't we, within the last year, vote to approve the extension on this project subject to him keeping his other approvals current?
You, you did.
Right.
That, it was a year ago when that...
Was it a, no, it was less than a year ago.
The planning, the planning board voted on it about six months ago.
Yeah, because Mr. Cofflin's been in here and...
Right.
Okay.
But that was only just, that was actually for planning board approval.
That's right.
Not for something that was before the zoning board.
Exactly. But we, we approved, we gave him the extension from our plan perspective, and we've looked at it within the last year.
Yes.
Okay. It's just that his special exception was on a different time cycle, which was another whole part of the, of what this development has been through. Right, okay.
It would be nice if we got our timetables together and...
Well, that, that arose out of different circumstances. So technically, that should have been granted before it came here, and that was a whole different issue.
It would be nice, though, if we came up with something in our zoning ordinance that said, once you get a special exception and then planning board approval, your special exception runs at the same timetable as your planning board approval. You don't have to come back for intermediate, you know, every, every year.
I'd be happy with a rule that says you have to get the special exception approved before you come to the planning board.
Well, that's usually, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Development Regulation Subcommittee? Is that what I hear?
Anyway, so, if the board wants to make any comments, this is your opportunity. Otherwise, I'll write to the zoning board that there were none...
What was the special exception request for?
Now you're going to make me think.
Chickens?
Roosters? Okay. Multifamily housing in an R1 zone.
Okay, that's...
Is that the same thing that he had?
Yeah, right now, he's just asking for an extension on the approval.
That was my question.
Yeah.
So he's asking for extension or what he had?
That's what he had got in any...
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure that he wasn't requesting something.
No.
No.
I don't have any comment. I don't have any reason to comment on it. That's a ZBA issue.
That's it, Brian? You're all, you're going through, all your action items are set? Any upcoming meetings? Did you get the call for tonight's meet? Was it, what's it called? Granite, keep...
Granite State Futures?
Granite State Futures.
Oh.
I got a call tonight if I signed up, so if anybody's interested in knowing more about that.
I had forwarded on some information to you all about a meeting on April 4th, I think, is that right?
Yes. It might be in Nashua on that one, but tonight, there was another one. Tonight was...
Oh, was there another one?
There are, there are a few of them at different locations.
Different ones in different locations.
Yeah. Yeah, the next one's Nashua, maybe next week.
Good to, good to participate on. It's a statewide, regional planning effort. So, each, each planning commission, or I guess it's a regional, yeah, Regional Planning Commission within the state, I think there's nine of them or something like that. Is that right, Barbara?
Close enough.
They are all working on their own regional master plan, basically. And then that is going to kind of be all incorporated into this one big master plan that the state has sort of done, you know, in conjunction with, everybody's sort of working on together and using the same formats for the plan, and so it'll be one big state master plan.
Now, Barbara's with Southern New Hampshire. Is, is this a rep, a planning board rep for Southern New Hampshire Planning? Are you, we don't have a representative on Southern New Hampshire Planning, and that's, that's just, we do, and that's you.
Yeah, Goffstown does. Goffstown is a member of that Regional Planning Commission. All the communities are a member of some Regional Planning Commission. Goffstown is.
Yes.
And we have appointed representatives to that planning commission. I am one of them. Hank Boyle is one of them.
Yes.
Tony Martz is one of them, and I believe Joanie, Joanne Duffy is. And right now, one of them is an alternate, and I can't think of which one.
I think it's Tony.
I think it might be Tony, too.
That's great, yeah, okay. So no, but nothing to do with, nothing through the planning board, it's just a coincidence that you're...
Usually, there's a planning board rep to it, just because of the function.
Right.
But yeah, it could be, anybody can apply.
Okay.
And then actually, what it usually happens is the planning board makes a recommendation and the selectmen appoint.
And Barbara happens to be the chair of the commission, right?
Right, great. All right, well, let's see. Upcoming meetings, April 11, Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. Certified site presentation to planning board. MAP 24, law at 63A, conditional use permit. April 25th, I think it's to be announced, kind of...
So, if we can all take a review of these rules and procedures and bring this up at the next meeting, that'd be great.
Anything else? All set, all set? Have a motion to...
Just one.
Oh, yes.
Point. If there, if Brian, if you're aware of any training for new planning board members, it might be prudent to let the new members know, so...
Wouldn't it be bad to let all of us know? I mean, they, they usually contain updates on the law and process and...
Yeah, it'd be good.
And am I showing up next Wednesday to that Economic Development? Is that...
Yeah.
If that's the first Wednesday of the month, right? So, okay.
It's usually right here.
Derek, Derek Horn, he's the Assistant Town Administrator. He's also the Economic Development Coordinator for the town. He sort of staffs that, similar to what I do for the planning board here. And so, you know, I'll let him know that you're the new person and give him your contact information.
Okay.
And he can get you...
How long did the last person last?
Who was the last person? Was it Alan?
EDC was Brian. Well, I think he can, Brian continued, but he couldn't...
Oh, yeah, that's right. He did it, and then he had to stop because he had too much going on. That's right.
At least he did it for more than a year, but less than a year as a planning board member. So somewhere between that, that time.
Okay.
Zero and infinity.
Five years was the bar?
As long as it was in two months.
Before that was Alan Eaton, wasn't it? I believe.
I think that was two or three years. I, it just kept, yeah. It's kind of enjoyable, you know, that was where I kind of started, so...
That was, that was before you were on the planning board even.
Yeah, a long time. I might have been with the Budget Committee. I was on that for six or seven years, so I got to see that side of it. Yeah, it was good. Okay, so, motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Okay, unanimous. We had a second, didn't we?
Yeah, a second.
Oh, I thought we had a second. Sorry about that. Mark, second.
Silent second.
Okay.
Silent vote, too.
Silent, it was a silent vote, but I bet it's unanimous. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You'll get, whatever papers you need to try to get...